We'll call the meeting to order. Before we proceed with this evening, Mr. Chen, we ask that you please rise and join us in saluting the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. At this time, the Chair recognizes the Planning Department to read the items on the agenda which they recommend for adjournment.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items for adjournment because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number 1, 2012-04, Storybook Homes, Wisconsin; number 2, 2012-02, Carlson Associates, Kings Park; number 3, 2015-05, Thomas Giswale, Kings Park; number 4, 2010-06, KVC Holdings; under waiver requests, number 5, 773 Scholar Estates; number 6, 1135 Tuamee Platte, St. James; number 7, 911A Glen Hole Northern, St. James; under final subdivision, number 8, 1156, map of Open Meadow Fort Solongo; and under amendment of conditional approval, number 9, a 280 application, second map of Santa Remo.
Is there anyone present here this evening who wishes to be heard on any of the items recommended to be adjourned? There being none, is there a motion to adjourn these items?
Motion to adjourn items 1 through 9 as read.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The items are adjourned. The next item on the agenda is a preliminary subdivision, Country Point at Smithtown, seeking approval for 69 townhouse units.
The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide 11.63 acres into 69 townhouse units. The proposed development consists of 13 residential buildings of 4 to 8 units each, a recreation center, a pool, sewage treatment plant, drainage reserve area, and 326 parking stalls. The units range from 1,650 square feet to 2,010 square feet and include 10% to be set aside as affordable per the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The preliminary map of number 1167, Country Point at Smithtown, is composed of seven tax lots with 300 feet of frontage on New York State Route 347, 354 feet of frontage on New York State Route, excuse me, 111, 50 feet of frontage on Silver Bridge Lane, and 50 feet of frontage on Haven Lane. It is the site of the former community hospital of Western Suffolk, which closed in 1999. It also includes one tax lot that was previously developed with a single-family residence. Presently, all structures have been demolished with the exception of the hospital's sewage treatment plant. The sewage treatment plant and all remnants of structure and pavement on the site will be removed from the site prior to construction. The applicant proposes to construct 69 townhouse units with vehicular access from New York State Route 111 and pedestrian and emergency access from New York State Route 347. The site is zoned R6, townhouse structures. There is quarter acres, single-family residential neighborhood north of the site, zoned R10. The land east of the site is zoned OB, office business, R10, NB, neighborhood business, and SCB, shopping center business, and consists of two filling stations, a small medical office, and a shopping center. New York State Route 347 borders the site on the south. The south side of New York State Route 347 is zoned CB, central business, NB, and OB, and is developed with a number of shopping centers and retail and office establishments. West of the site along New York State Route 347 is an office building, zoned OB. Beyond the office building and adjoining the northwestern boundary of the site is half-acre single-family residential neighborhood, zoned R21. The site is relatively level, ranging from 45 feet to 60 feet above sea level, with steep slopes located along the west property line. The site also contains wetlands in the northwest portion of the property. Much of the site has high groundwater, however, the applicant received variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals to alter land with high groundwater. The applicant proposes to construct all units so that all cellar floor elevations are at least 2 feet above the historic high groundwater level of 47 and 1/2 feet. In addition, the applicant proposes to floodproof the basements in units 55 through 62, the units closest to the drainage reserve area, and that would be most likely to experience groundwater flooding. The site was subject of a zone change in 2006 from R10 to R6. The zone change was approved on May 9, 2006, and amended on June 28, 2006, subject to the following conditions: Number 1, this recommendation should not be construed as an approval of any specific site plan or yield; 2, access to the site shall be limited to the existing traffic signal on New York State Route 111, with emergency access only to New York State Route 347; 3, existing vegetation along the boundaries with adjoining residentially zoned properties shall be preserved, and additional landscape buffers shall be established as determined by the Planning Board and/or the Board of Site Plan Review; 4, there shall be no variances granted from the R6 required setbacks around the perimeter of the site, nor can the height be increased beyond the 35 feet; 5, of the 4 parking spaces per unit required under the zoning ordinance, at least 2 spaces per unit must be set aside for common parking spaces; 6, no heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, HVAC equipment may be placed in the rear of those structures abutting the existing single-family homes; 7, all lighting shall be shielded and directed away from adjoining single-family residences as required by the Board of Site Plan Review; 8, at least 10% of the residence units shall be for affordable purposes in perpetuity. The method of achieving affordability shall be determined by written agreement between the town and the petitioner prior to submission of a site plan application; 9, pedestrian walkways shall be provided on the interior of the site along Route New York State 111; 10, the petitioner shall demolish all existing buildings on site within 60 days of the approval of this petition. The Board of Zoning Appeals granted 8 variants for the proposed development on September 23, 2015. 1, reduce minimum lot area per dwelling unit from 7,260 square feet to 6,731 square feet due to the 0.6 acres of wetlands and steep slopes behind, being excluded from the buildable lot area; 2, reduce minimum front yard setback for parking from 100 feet to 80 feet. It was later determined that this variance was not necessary because proposed turnaround area does not meet the definition of a parking area pursuant to Section 322-3; 3, increase the maximum gross floor area from 30% to 36%; 4, increase the maximum lot coverage from 15% to 20%; 5, increase the number of dwelling units in 2 buildings from 6 to 7 and from 6 to 8; 6, permit structures within 10 feet of environmentally sensitive land, depth to groundwater less than 10 feet. This variance also appears to have been unnecessary; 7, permit environmentally sensitive lands to be altered; and 8, increase the yield from 27 to 69 dwelling units, 63 units plus 10% Long Island Workforce Housing Act bonus. It has come to the Planning Department's attention that the boundary line along New York State 111 is shown incorrectly on the plans. Apparently, the state took land to accommodate the widening and reconfiguration of New York State Route 347 and 111. This was not reflected on the survey and the plan submitted to the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Board. It appears that taking likely reduced the buildable lot area and legal yield of the property by 1 or 2 units, meaning that the final yield will likely be 67 or 68 units. The taking may also necessitate additional variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Engineering Department finds the preliminary plans acceptable, provided the final application addresses the following items: 1, the emergency overflow spillway at the drainage reserve area A shall be extended outside the drainage reserve area limits to provide for slope stabilization. A revised detail shall be provided; 2, provide proposed concrete survey monuments along entire boundary line and/or indicate the presence of existing monuments; 3, to revise storm pollution prevention plan, storm water pollution prevention plan shall be submitted for approval to the Engineering Department. The Highway Department has reviewed the preliminary plans and has no comment to offer because this is a private community and has no effect on town roads. The Traffic Safety Department has reviewed the preliminary plans and found it to be a private community that has no effect on town roadways. Pursuant to the requirements of Section A 14 to 24, Article 14 of the Suffolk County Administrative Code, subdivision was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Suffolk County Department of Economic Development and Planning responded that the proposal is considered to be a matter of local determination. This application was sent to the New York State Department of Transportation, and the applicant is in communication with regards to receiving an approval for site work with New York State Highway Right-of-Way and issuance of a New York State Highway Work Permit. DOT recommended that the cross-access to the site be obtained from the adjacent property on the south side. It is also recommended providing vehicular or pedestrian access to Haven Lane and screening the proposed sewage treatment plant. The Planning Department has reviewed the preliminary plans and finds them generally acceptable. However, in order to comply with the conditions of the zone change approval and to protect the value of the Haven Lane neighborhood, the Planning Department recommends enhancing the vegetated buffer units, buffer behind units 27 through 34 and 51 through 55. Further, in support of New York State DOT's comments regarding improved cross-access, the Planning Department recommends creating a pedestrian walkway from the development to Haven Lane and shorting the easement planting island along the entrance drive in order to facilitate future cross-access to Suffolk County Tax Map Number 157248. The Department of Environment and Waterways is reviewing this application and will prepare recommendation after it has the opportunity to review the minutes from the public hearing. The Planning Department recommends that the application be adjourned until October 5, 2016, to allow the applicant adequate time to submit revised plans with the corrected property line, to allow the Town Department's adequate time to review and revised, to review the revised plans, and to allow the applicant adequate time to obtain all necessary approvals from the Town Board and Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. Chair recognizes the applicant's representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Vincent Pizzuli, counsel to the applicant, with offices at 200 Robbins Lane, Suite D1, in Jericho, New York. Let the record first reflect that I'm handing up the required affidavit of posting and photographs. Also, before I begin, I'd like to just hand up, for each of the board members, just a packet of site elevation drawings and renderings, so the board has any questions, I could direct them to the appropriate person.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. You're trying to be friendly here.
Yeah, let the record reflect that counsel has provided each of the board members with a site map and renderings.
Just for the record also, the owner of the subject property, his attorney is here tonight, Mr. Vincent Chmarco. The owner is VEA 181st Street Realty Corp. I represent the applicant, 347 Building Company, which is in contract to purchase the subject property. My first observation tonight is to accept and agree with the Planning Board's recommendations with one clarification or correction. Since the time that this memo was drafted, we've actually had an opportunity to study the effects of the taking that occurred along Route 111 and...
The microphone for the stenographer.
We recently discovered that New York State DOT acquired a portion of the subject property along the Route 111 frontage. That unfortunately was not reflected on the survey and map that was submitted to the Planning Board for this application. We are finalizing the survey. We've been able to map, we've acquired the DOT maps, and we're showing the area in question on the map. But as you'll see from noting that hashed in area on Route 111, the property has slightly decreased in lot area, and the boundary is inset more than what was shown on the original map. We've studied that, the effect of that change, and that map reflects that we can comply with the 100-foot front yard building setbacks and still maintain the same number of units and density and compliance with all of the prior approvals. So what we're going to do is accept the Planning Department's recommendation to adjourn. We're going to finalize the survey for the taking area, resubmit the slightly revised map, so that the board will have it when it receives its secret recommendation and can act accordingly.
Okay. And how would the, how would that affect the location? I assume you're going to be shifting the location.
Correct. The buildings will move back slightly to make up for the distance that encroached with the taking area.
Okay.
Okay. I really don't have much to add to the Planning Department's report. They covered everything, but I will indicate that our project engineers and architect is here. We're all available to answer any questions with regard to any aspect of this application.
Okay. Does any member of the board have any questions on this proposal?
Can you say how many square feet were included in the taking roughly?
It looks like from the DOT maps, roughly 4,500 square feet, which is roughly a tenth of an acre.
Thanks.
It's negligible, but it does affect the front yard setback, so we have to make an adjustment for it.
Okay.
Okay. The, having visited the site, I noticed that there's a nice amount of locust trees, about 50 foot in height, off Haven Lane and some of the surrounding homes. Those would be in the buffet area, and those, I assume, would remain untouched.
If, those trees will be marked out, but the proposal calls for us to maintain as much of the natural vegetation as possible. We're going to augment sections of the 50-foot side yard setback wherever it needs to be augmented with additional landscaping. There will be some vegetation in the 50-foot setback area that will be lost due to construction activities, but, but the condition that the Planning Department has recommended and that we agree with is to preserve as much as possible and to augment the existing.
Right, because those trees are significant in height, have been there a long time, and I imagine the residents would share my concerns on this.
I would, I would say that if, if they're in the vicinity of the property line, the likelihood of them being preserved is much greater.
Okay, because we've heard excuses in the past, that Hurricane Sandy, the bollievals or whatever caused the demise of these trees, and it was not the actions of the people working on site.
Okay. We'll, we'll be marking trees out for site plan review, so I'm sure the Planning Department will take that comment and revisit it.
I'm sure they will. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, one other question. Looks like on the, I guess it would be the north side where the residents are adjoining the proposed structures, roughly, very roughly, what's the distance from the back of the proposed residences to the property line of the adjoining property?
50 feet minimum.
So 50 feet from the back of the building, not necessarily, that's not the vegetation area?
50 feet from the back of, of any accessory structure adjoining the building.
To the property line.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this matter? If so, please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Judy Rowe, Two Tangle Drive. R O E, Judy. Something I heard about a pedestrian walkway going through Haven Lane. I don't remember hearing that before. Did I hear correctly?
That was read by the Planning Department, and I could ask them to allow the rate on that.
Okay.
The State Department of Transportation recommends that the town require vehicular access to Haven Lane and pedestrian access to Haven Lane. We don't recommend the vehicular access because the Town Board, when it changed the zone, banned vehicular access, but we do recommend a, an opening for pedestrians to come and go.
Okay.
You mean from 111 onto Haven Lane?
No, from the...
From the project?
From the site, yeah, from the homes.
We had never heard that before, so that's why I was curious about it. Also, going around it, there's a metal guardrail. Is that staying or going, or what's happening with the guardrail?
I'm not positive, but I suspect that whatever is there would be replaced. If a guardrail is needed on Haven, for example, it would be new. If there's, there's a place where a guardrail doesn't make sense, then it would just be removed. I think most of the guardrail that I remember was sort of derelict.
Guardrails behind our house, actually, and there's a big drop.
Right.
I think that's why they put the guardrails in.
Yeah, I suspect that that's coming out, and, and the land will be changed and trees and stuff will be planted. It's, it's actually a little bit too early to tell, but chances are very good by the time that this gets done with the Board of Site Plan Review, there won't be a guardrail, but there will be evergreens, trees, and shrubs.
Okay. In other words, there's no chance of a car dropping off the side of the hill, because basically that's what the guardrails are.
If there were, the, I could state with certainty, the town wouldn't allow that.
Okay. Now, this pathway, walkway, that's supposed to be, how large of a walkway are we referring to?
Usually, it's for handicap access, which the minimum width is 42 inches, it would probably be 4 feet.
It would be paved?
Normally, again, for handicap access, it's normally, there's some form of a pavement.
Concrete, right?
Well, sometimes concrete is typical, it could be asphalt. Sometimes there's a type of gravel that's called stone dust that meets the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. Again, that's, that's a detail that another board would work on if this board approves the plat. This board normally doesn't get involved in that level of detail.
I was just wondering about the width of it, you know?
Normally 42-inch minimum.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes.
This walkway, would that give access to people who wanted to park on, let's say, Haven Lane and, and then walk through?
In other words, like if anyone lived in this...
Visiting a, being a guest, visiting the complex?
In other words, could someone park on Haven and then walk in to use the site?
Yes, if there wasn't enough parking.
Sure, it's a good point, and I'm just looking at...
Mr. Flynn and members of the Planning Board, I'd like to address that issue, maybe after this next speaker.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else, sir, would you like to be heard? Please come forward.
Yes, my name is Jane Williams, 125 Smithtown Boulevard, in Wisconsin, New York. Now, I traverse this road quite often, and it, you said a traffic study was done? This just came light to me in the last week or so. Was there a traffic study done? I see a potential of 100 or more vehicles coming out onto that little jughead, as they call it there, and there is no dispensation to go directly onto Route 347, which I thought there would be, would make sense. Was there a traffic study done for New York State? Are all the CQs in, everything in here yet?
Counsel, I believe, can respond to your question.
That's the first question.
A traffic study was performed when the property was rezoned to R6. It was accepted, and, and the zone change was approved. Since that time, the State DOT has factored in the traffic from this proposed development into its widening and improvement plans along 347 and 111, and we are currently have an application into the State DOT, and they've asked us to program, reprogram the signal at the 111 North Jughead to appropriately time traffic entering this intersection. So the answer is yes, a traffic study was performed, and yes, the DOT has factored it into its highway program.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my second wasn't really a question as much as that. I know because of construction, it seems like there's a lot of traffic there, and I know something should be, could be done with the property, but that is a lot of cars coming in and out of there. I mean, you have spaces in front of each individual unit, and you have 57 parking spaces left over. I never thought I'd see the day that this Smithtown, the old Smithtown Hospital, would be used for this. I don't see it. I mean, I think we're building the wrong things here, and we're building too much. I'm going to bring this up before the Smithtown actual board, but since you have all your paperwork so far, I'm going to have to let it ride with that for now, because this is just ad hoc right now for me. And I'll tell you something else. Yes, sir?
Perhaps help you out with that. It's kind of too late for this board to consider the density of development on the property. The person, the town rezoned it roughly 10 years ago, and they made an application for building permits, and it was determined that they were building more units than what the zoning allowed. The Board of Zoning Appeals granted the variance to go to 69 units, so they're basically entitled to, I mean, I don't know, I changed my tone of voice, but I don't know why. They are entitled to the 69 units. The question before the Planning Board usually has to deal with the layout, the street pattern, the locations of the buildings, the drainage, things like that, so...
I just see only one egress, you know, entrance and exit on here, which is, it's, just astounds me, that's all. And I just remembered the second question. You said you were going to, there was going to be the amount of workforce housing. Are you going to stay with the 20%? I believe it's 20% that's recommended, or are you going to...
10%.
It's 10%? The 10%, I got 20 from that.
Years ago, if you went to earlier public hearings, it was 20%.
That's why I'm getting...
And it was a county affordable housing requirement. The state supersedes that, and they have a workforce housing requirement, and it's only 10%.
That's correct. This is self-funded, as far as you know? I'm just curious, I'll have to look that up myself. You're not here to answer that question, probably.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this?
Could he just answer his question?
Please come forward if you have any questions or...
Same that she did.
Well, please state so for the record.
You mean you want him to answer the questions? He says we're just, we're just waiting until all the public is done commenting, and then Mr. Pizzuli will, will answer them all, I'm sure.
I wanted to come back and, and address the comment about the Haven Lane frontage and the recommendation for a sidewalk. That needs to be discussed more and dealt with at, at the Board of Site Plan Review. I don't, the property is fenced along the boundaries of the properties on Haven Lane, and our property is also going to be fenced, and the areas in which the DOT might be suggesting there be a sidewalk is actually the backyard of some of the homes that will be constructed on this property. I don't think that's a desirable feature. So my suggestion is going to be to create an aesthetic, an aesthetic barrier at the Haven Lane frontage that is pleasing to the neighbors on Haven Lane, but I don't think there should be cross-access through the backyards of the new homes on this property.
I'm not entirely convinced that that is a wise idea myself.
Thank you.
I would like to, you know, examine that part of this plan further.
Could the state be approached on that?
Is the state, is this contingent on the state?
It's just a comment. You don't have to adhere to the comment.
I think it's a bad idea to myself, because you're going to have people...
Correct. You wouldn't want to have people walking through your backyard.
And go visiting people or...
Correct.
Yeah, and walking through.
It's a security issue.
There's a lot, it's a whole lot of issues.
Yes, you're right, correct.
In someone's backyard, not a bad, not a good idea.
Not a good idea.
No.
That's all I have to say.
I think there was another question that one of the people had.
Does anyone have any further comments, questions on this?
The question is, it's self-funded, I think.
Is the project self-funded?
I believe that was the question. This is not subsidized by the government.
No. If there, if there was a grant for this, I'd apply for it, but there isn't.
What school district is this?
Hopock, hopock.
Any other questions or comments for many members of the public? You have any other items you'd like to...
I don't. I'd just like to thank the board for, for hearing us out. I'm not going to belabor the proceedings. The Planning Department has recommended that this application be adjourned for secret purposes and for purposes of us fixing the boundary line. I think the request was to the October 5 meeting. I would, I would request September 21st. I'm ambitious. I think I'm going to be able to accomplish all these things by then, and if I'm wrong, then we can go to October 5th, if you don't mind, David?
I don't mind.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
That's agreeable, and we'll let you go to work with the state on this.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
In a matter of item number 1167, Country Point at Smithtown, I move that we adjourn this matter to the September 21st, 2016 meeting of this board.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The item is adjourned to September 21st.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Bill, could you pass that down, please?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a waiver request for the pines at Smithtown. We're revisiting this issue regarding the posting of a sign.
The applicant requests to extend the performance bond for a period of two years to expire on December 2nd, 2017, in order to bring its approval up to date so that it may be released. The applicant also requests to waive a sign to be posted in the right-of-way shown on the filed map. The planning board heard this request at its last meeting held July 13th, 2016. At the meeting, the board heard the testimony from the applicant's attorney and read the planning department's advisory report into the record. The board then adjourned the matter and requested the planning department to draft recommended design requirements for the sign that is to be posted in the unpaved town right-of-way. The planning department inspected the site and recommends that the sign be a 12-inch by 18-inch aluminum green sign with white lettering mounted on a 4-inch by 4-inch wood post. The sign should be a minimum of three feet and maximum of four feet high. A sketch is attached for the board's consideration. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. The first resolution was approved at the last meeting, so I'm going to skip over that. And be it resolved that the planning board hereby denies the request of Nescot Village Corp. to waive the installation of a sign in the town right-of-way reading "Road may be built at discretion of the town of Smithtown," shown on the filed map in the subdivision known as Number 1010A, map of the pines at Nescot for the following reason. One, there appears to be no hardship or difficulty to the applicant in complying with the requirement, and be it resolved that the sign to be posted in the unpaved right-of-way shall comply with the following. It shall be a 12-inch by 18-inch aluminum green sign with white lettering mounted on a 4-inch by 4-inch wood post. Two, at least three feet but no more than four feet high. Three, placed within 45 feet of Lawrence Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Eugene Aldina Cola, 200 Railroad Avenue, Sable, New York. With regard to the sign, the style which was developed in conversations with the planning staff, I did, however, request that the sign be placed 50 feet back. The houses on either side, there are two houses which front Lawrence Drive, and then you have the tap street in between. Those houses set back approximately between 47 and 48 feet. At least, I would like the sign behind the front line of the house. I don't think five feet is going to make a difference, and I believe Allison said when we were speaking, she said she didn't think there would be a problem, and I would hope that the board would consider 50 feet rather than 45 feet. Other than that, the applicant agrees with everything.
Okay, as long as they don't plant trees in front of it, they, they seem to be nicely developed.
Well, if you notice, they've landscaped it, they've, they've put a berm, they did all, all kinds of very nice, attractive things.
Irrigation system, yes, yeah, they did.
So, I mean, at 50 feet, I don't think it's going to make a difference. At least, it's not in front of the, you know, front line of the house, that's all.
Any feelings on that?
50 feet is fine with me.
50 feet? We okay with 50?
Doesn't matter to me. Do you have a problem with five more feet, Dave? I don't see that's going to change anything significantly on the negative end, I mean...
I, I recommended 10 feet, so 50 is, 45 to 50 makes no difference to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll assume 50 feet then, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll, we'll adjust the resolution to read 50 feet.
Fine. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there a motion?
In the matter of 1010A pines in Nescot, I move that we adopt the resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department, except that the resolution will be modified to reflect that the sign is to be placed within 50 feet of Lawrence Drive as opposed to 45 feet as was stated in the original resolution.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. In other matters, we have the adoption of minutes of April 20, May 18th, and June 1st.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the April 20th, 2016, May 18th, 2016, and June 1st, 2016 meetings.
Second.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Minutes are adopted. Is there any other business to be brought before the board this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.